All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I think everyone's here. A floor is present. We are ready to get started. We would like to welcome our visitors. We are always pleased to have you here. Thank you for taking the time to be here. At this time, I will call Randy to say the pledge and give the indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear my Father, thank you, Father, being blessed since you blessed us with. Father, we thank you tonight for the safe return for the five-year-old that's been abducted and now is released back to his family. Father, we thank you for that. We pray for the family members of the bus driver that was shot and killed. In his honor, for he was very a noble man trying to do what he did. And Father, we pray for the families of all of those involved. We thank you for our law enforcement, how they diligently worked to receive this boy safely. Father, again, we thank you for all that you do for us. We thank you for the creation. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be servants and caretakers of your creation. Father, I pray that we be good stewards of anything you give us in charge of. Father, I pray and thank you for our militaries gathered throughout the world. Father, that you'll keep them safe for whatever they do. Make them successful and then bring them back home safely to their families. And Father, I pray for the president, for the highest authority to the lowest authority in our government. I pray that they seek guidance from you and wisdom how to govern this nation. Father, I pray from mayor to council tonight, I pray that you give us knowledge and wisdom and sermon for each and every issue that comes before us. And Fathers, we leave here tonight, I pray that you see each and every one of us for our destination sake. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name.
Amen.
We'd like to thank Grove for our message of peace. I think he's passed them out to all the ladies here. So if you have a napkin or a chair, you may seek Grove right there. He'll give you some peace. Glad to have him make our meeting a little more comfortable. Copies of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2013 regular meeting have been distributed to the members of the council. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? If not, I ask for a motion for their approval.
So what?
Councilman Myers makes a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, I don't know who said that word. Councilman Carr seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the personnel report. And we don't have one tonight, so we will move right along. The next portion of the meeting will serve as the public hearing to consider a restaurant liquor license for Nora C. Medina of Bridge Street Cafe Inc., doing business as Bridge Street Cafe, located at 373 Gunner Avenue. If you would like to say anything, I ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address. Is there anyone here in opposition? Is there anyone here in support? Would you like to speak? Since there's no one here in opposition or support, I would like to ask for a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Mosley makes a motion to approve the license.
Second.
Councilman Myers seconds the motion. Any discussion? If not, I will ask the clerk to call the robe.
Councilman Stewart?
Yes.
Councilman Gillen?
Yes.
Councilman Carey? Carey, I'm sorry.
Yes. That was close, baby.
Now keep counting toes. Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Myers?
Yes.
Councilman Cornelius?
Yes.
Councilman Whitaker?
No.
Mayor Dawes?
Yes.
Liquor license passes. Next, I would like to call Chief Adams to explain the next thing, the refinance and purchase of fire equipment.
Good evening, Mary. Tonight, what we've come before you to do is to ask for your permission to refinance a current debt on Engine One, which was purchased in 2006 by the city, which had a remaining balance for three years of service left on the lease. Payoff as of today is $221,000 just over that. I bring the actual figures. I apologize for that. Our annual payment on that truck and equipment that was purchased in 2006 was $78,181. And some few cents, it's due annually. That was a 10-year lease. And so, we're asking, the rate, the interest rate on that lease was 4.7%. And what we're asking to do is permission one to refinance that truck. We believe we can get a rate of around 2% and save on the interest for the city. And then we're asking you to add some additional funds to that to allow us to purchase what we call our small rescue trucks, so we may convert our operations back to a small platform instead of running our pumbers on all of the emergencies for the city. We've been looking at use. We do not have enough funding to purchase new trucks. Y'all gave us some appropriation this year to purchase equipment of $100,000 located in a used pumper in very good condition, which is a Pierce Dash pumper, consistent with our fleet. And that particular unit has been offered us for $90,000. It has 14,000 miles on it and needs all of our space if we were to buy a new one. Tonight, we're going to ask, we're going to seek your approval to purchase the 1996 Pierce Dash pumper. This unit would also be used to replace our 1984 Pierce Dash pumper that's been out of service since July last year due to mechanical failure. And the approximate repair cost on that truck is $21,000. So we feel like it's better to go ahead and make an investment on a truck that's running and repaired 84 miles and move forward. These three small trucks that we're asking for permission to buy is a total cost of $75,000 for three small trucks, with the one having the most mileage of 31,000 miles, just over 31,000 miles. So what we've come before you tonight to do is ask for permission one to pursue a new loan, which would refinance and pay, one page and one off, would refinance the debt to a lower interest rate and save on interest. Two, we're asking for permission to purchase a pumper from Manchurian Township Fire Department in New Jersey, a 1996 Pierce Dash, at a price, purchase price of $90,000. Three, we're asking for permission to purchase three small med trucks, breast trucks from Lino Lakes Minnesota Fire Protection District for an amount of $75,000.
And just to clarify a little bit, Tracy, on the, we're asking for, Tracy's asking for permission to actually do the loan application with Amfund, through the lead. And I think he's requesting, he and I sat down and run the numbers, and the maximum amount that would be used, and I don't know that we would use all of it, would be up to $500, $5,000. This would extend the current loan payment by four years.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We would not increase our annual payment at all before we paid them. We would just extend the term.
And this would allow the purchase of the smaller trucks, which would convert the operations of the fire departments from running the big trucks to little trucks. And then this would also allow us to refinance the truck, the Engine One, the Word of Bird truck. And then this would also allow, there's probably going to have to be some equipment purchased on the new, the smaller trucks that would probably come out of this funding. But anything else we will, besides these initial purchases, anything the loan funds would be used for would come before the council to request permission. The main thing is we have to do the application, which we have not done. We have to have your approval.
So we're looking at three trucks for $70,000, right?
Yes, sir, that's the small trucks.
And then we're looking at $90,000 for the other truck.
Yes, sir, that's for the pumpers to replace.
Which is $145,000 plus the other one that we're going to refinance on the book.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Captain, exactly, the payoff I have is good third day at 2001.
Tracy, and I know you and I have talked extensively about this, but, you know, if we extend, whether it's five, six, or seven years out, depending on how much money we actually use and if we put some back in or whatever, it's your opinion that all trucks, the new small trucks that we're purchasing, plus the current status of our fleet, once we replace and we'll have that reserve back in, that they will last that six to seven years by rotating to these smaller trucks with medics? And then at that point, we're probably, we're out, we're going to have to do some other investments, so.
Yeah, we're, quite honestly, if we can make it through to get our debt paid off, we're going to be in a position with that kind of a road to replace a couple of two pumbers. And then at minimum, put the new chassis under the small trucks. I can't make any guarantees. I stand up here for you today. I'm certainly hopeful that it's going to slow down our mechanical costs and our fuel costs on our upgrades. And I think that we'll make it for terms, as I've told somebody during the past week. You know, the term is seven years on the loan, but that's what we use every bit of money. I don't know that we use every bit. I'm optimistic personally, as the department head, I want to get the debt paid off in five years. I feel pretty comfortable for five years, we can, we can hopefully make it. You know, and certainly if you get into six or seven years. What we're going to do, basically, we're going back to the old concept of the way we used to run the department. And we're going to stop our engines. That's what's going to happen. Our engines are not going to roll out the doors unless we've actually got a true working structure fire. So all the wear and tear is going to roll over on these small trucks. 75% of our calls are medical. The other 25% fires at various times and service calls and so forth. So the load is going to be carried by these one-ton trucks, which are certainly less expensive. Our fuel mileage should, we're getting about four miles per gallon now, we should get up to about eight to nine. We've got a set of tires on the engine, a rear set of tires. Just the last set we purchased was $2,525 for four rear tires for a pumper. Whereas we should be able to buy four rear tires for a breast truck at a lot less cost. So, and another kind of steers away from your question, but I'm hopeful that with this small trucks, they'll endure the wear and tear through our streets and up and down our hills. Not that our big trucks haven't held up. They've held up well for what we've used them for. But, you know, we're really rapidly diminishing the life of those trucks. And we've got Engine Three, as it's known today, is at 76,000 miles. Which once, with your approval for the purchase of this engine, it will go into reserve status. If the engine we're purchasing has 14,000 miles. Engine Ones are a used engine in our fleet. It's a 2006, worth about 56,000 miles. And we still have $221,000 worth of debt on that truck. So we've got to slow our large trucks down. Because a new truck, and we're talking about expending $90,000. An equivalent new truck, like the truck we're buying today, is $24,400, $520 for one truck. You know, and so we certainly got to have the funds there. Engine One in 2006 costs $580,000, truck loan. And then we bought the equipment for it and the equipment needed for Engines Two and Three. So certainly, we don't have the funding necessary to do all these changes in our operations. But hopefully, with your approval, we're going to change operations, slow down our field maintenance costs and certainly slow down the wear and tear on the pumbers. And hopefully extend the life of the trucks. We'll go back to, instead of a 10-year truck, a 12-year truck, we'll go back to a 15- to 20-year truck. And of course, at the end of this loan term, two of our trucks will get to 25-year loan. So, you know, and it's just, I think it'll work. I'm hopeful it'll work. Hopefully it does. I'm, I've got my neck down.
Well, I think it's a good concept. And what I'm glad to see is that if the council approves this, we're going to be running those medic calls with the same type of vehicle out of all three of the stations. Which, you know, at first we thought we might not be able to do that, but because you find these trucks, we're going to be able to do that, and I appreciate it.
It is a benefit. The three trucks we found are all crew caps, and so it's important for our operations. It allows us to maintain crew consistency, which allows us to continue to provide the same level of care to our services. And we're going to send a full crew out and be able to provide the same services we do today when we send an engine out. So that's important, especially if it's someone in cardiac arrest or they've had a traumatic accident or it takes more than one or two, they're going to take care of it out of the field, so it's important.
Tracy, for clarification, so our fleet will end up looking like what? How many pumbers? Will we have the one, or will we have?
No, sir. We'll, with the purchase of this pumper, y'all approved of that. We will go back to four pumbers. We have, well, we've got three frontline pumbers, one for each station, Station One, Two, and Three. And then we have one reserve pumper that, basically, under our operational plan, is used to, when our frontline pumbers goes down, that pumper's moving into the slot where it can maintain and continue its service. It's also used for what we call our out-of-town trucks. So if we go out in jurisdiction, that reserve truck, that's when we utilize that truck to go out, divide in each way to the departments. So we'll have four pumbers, just as the norm they have. Right now, currently, we've got three, and one that's been out of service since July last year. And so we won't be increasing or decreasing. Where we will be increasing is we'll be increasing our small fleet, the small trucks from One to Three, and basically.
You said 75% of the calls are emergencies, so that would be service with the small trucks?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And quite honestly, our goal is with these small trucks, Mayor Dollar visits and equipment, we'll have to buy a fire suppression kit to go in these trucks at a future date. I'm not in a position to not recommend, or, first, we've got to put out the bids, like, and get approval for that. But our goal, there's some technology that is out that we're discussing and manufacturing out. And our hope is that this technology will allow these small trucks to take us as far as doing attack on the structure to when you get a pumper there. And we're just very early in checking. And we converted in '06 to what's called cash technology. It really propelled the department forward in our abilities. And this is a better than test. So we're looking at that, and so if it comes forward from these small trucks, may potentially handle about 90% of our calls.
So in layman's terms, or putting it in language that I can understand, it's like sending out a tractor trailer when all you need is a pickup.
Right, that's correct. And we're going to try to get back to the pickup, so let's pedal box.
Tracy, just a question. Phil indulges me. Does this mean that the city of Gunnersville has kind of come full circle? Were we not in the situation we're trying to get to previously?
We were, and there's certainly different operational models. What you're seeing happen with us is happening across the nation. We're not the only city that moved away from the small trucks to the large trucks. And the concept here with Gunnersville, the reason we did, was to consolidate our manpower. Under Chief Bearden, we didn't have the staffing we have today. So we were trying to pull our men together to be more sufficient in handling emergency response. And plus, we would pull all of our teams. The concept, when we ran the small trucks before, we were running one-ton chassis. And we were overloading the trucks with consistently replacing transmissions consistently, brakes, and the trucks weren't designed. You know, with going back to this, we're going to be very cautious about how we load these trucks. They won't be loaded like they used to be. But we are coming full circle in that.
I'm sufficiently satisfied. I appreciate your understanding, ma'am. Thanks for indulging.
Tracy, you also asked us to surplus the 2006, older than 1984 rear body brush.
No, it's not. It wasn't on the agenda.
I got one, just one question. And I meant to ask Tracy when we talked before. When we go out and need medical calls with the smaller trucks, the manpower will be left at the station that could save if a call turned on for a fire that would be able to take those pumbers and get out, respond to that.
Yeah, not necessarily making any concept your thinking. We're not going to diminish our crew size. That's not our operational platform. We're different today than we used to be. And today, before, we operated on this platform, we had two stations, and we had two men per station. Today, we operate with a minimum of nine men per shift, which is three men per station. So, and with, as Councilor said, let's get three of the trucks if y'all approve it. We'll have three identical trucks throughout the city. Typically, there are occasions, and it happens regularly, where we have all three stations committed after medical incident. But it's very rare, and that's just kind of luck and draw. I hate to use that terminology, but it happens. But most of the time, within the city, we're going to have two stations committed most of the time to the medical incident. So that leaves a station three to pull a pumper. And then, Station One is staffed truly, our minimum, our maximum on shift is 11 guys. I mean, Station One has five, and Engine, Station Two and Three have three. So in the event we're at full staffing, there's still two guys left back in Station One to pull a pumper. And that's not the case for Station Two and Three, and that's a little confusing. But that kind of goes back to the concept we were talking about a few minutes ago with the technology, what we're looking to do with the small trucks, that if they drop a call, if we can get that technology, even with the small trucks, they can drop right off the medic and go right on to the fire now. And that's what we've been doing with the pumbers. That's another concept of running the pumbers, is that we would have to fly back by a structure fire to the station and endanger the citizens by running an emergency from Clayton back to Station One, and the structure fires up here on Taylor Street. And so when we did the conversion of the pumbers years ago, that was the concept, to put all the pills in the toolbox. If we're over here at Clayton on a medical call, we come back and the fire's at Taylor, we come right back to the fire, start fighting fire. And that happens, but we'll still be able to do that with crew cab trucks and the technology on the small trucks and with the staffing in the stations we have. The additional staffing and additional station people we have, and I think we're good. I'm not sure I answered the question.
Yeah, well, yes, you, I just, you just concern me, you know, like, what if you were out on a call or, you know, if something happened, you know, would you have to, look, me and after, like you say, go back to the station, pick up the trucks, and come back and fight the car?
Yes, and I hope, I hope for us, we're successful in this new technology. It's taken better than the compression air foam technology. And it takes very minimal amount of water and foam to do our same job that we did years ago, just by the owners. Hopefully, we'll go that way.
Any other questions for Tracy?
I make the motion and we approve.
I'll circle.
Do we need to put in here what we're approving? Probably. We are approving the Amfund loan application.
The purchase of a pumper.
Purchase of a pumper, purchase of three.
Rescue trucks.
Rescue trucks.
From Minnesota.
And we're also approving the refinancing in this Amfund application.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm about to say.
That is exactly what Randy said, her aide.
Giving you the authority to sign and negotiate.
With the Amfund, everybody. Councilman Whitaker makes the motion. Councilman Gillen seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Tracy.
Thank y'all very much.
Next on the agenda is Judge Ian Brief is requested, and the court system has requested the purchase of a metal detector. And it looks like he's coming forward to give us a little information.
I'm trying to tell you how I got my supervisor, and I may answer most of the questions I have. Sometime before Christmas, we had a party from Baker Court, several other people who came up there, with people on alcohol, drugs, JCS people who collect behind the calls. Dan and his folks who are prosecutors. And I had a girl come to me, looking for one of these outfits, and said somebody had a gun sometime before Christmas. And after that, I talked to three other people, and they were all pretty, like I was, yeah, we know there's two or three or four people in here with guns at any time here in court. And I guess I'm just naive. I never had noticed it, thought any about it. I had noticed, especially this month, and being in court, in bankrupts, according to Federal Building in Gaston, had a friend of mine who was in city court in Gaston, Bridey, and I know Arab and Douglas. I've heard, I haven't been there damn like an inch of Apple City, as well as Boaz, all have metal detectors. Therefore, I was requested more so than maybe wanting one myself, by the, some of the personnel that are here, everybody, that I look in to get anyone. I talked to Mary too a few weeks ago. She said, look into, I started off by calling Homeland Security. They might know where I could get a used one. They didn't know anything. But Atlanta Weber, our chief magistrate, contacted two companies, one called Scan, and one called Rapid Scan. And they're both selling the exact same machine. The machines were used in the Olympics over in London. It was past summer or summer before last. I lived it summer before last one. Although they've been refurbished, they carry the same warranty that Randy Ullman does. They come in, train you in how to use them, and also provide you with what I think they refer to as warrants, which I know from me setting them all, if you go to the warrant set job, and you have a warrant, they go up to damn try to find out exactly like my suspender set them up, and that's sort of fun. They carry 24-month warranty. They both claim to provide you with service anytime you need it. In other words, if something goes wrong and you can't figure it out, they'll come back and get it going for you. There's not $40 difference in the price from the two companies. One of the companies, the one that costs $43 more gives you two warrants. The other company only gives you one. So they're up to the same.
I noticed they also have that training.
They, they come in, what they get when they set you up, they train. And I would guess our bailiff who uses probably the court magistrate's, would be the person that I would suggest would be trained and used on the same, where to put it, how to use it. And they just made a very nice one. Probably that door, locking the front doors out that way, because people use the bathrooms, and just have to come into that door with the metal detector and the officer sitting there as they come in. But again, whatever the people would suggest they're selling, they know a whole lot better than I do.
The honor, I have, just curious. You've got possibly three or four folks in the room that have firearms that probably shouldn't. How many folks are in your court that have firearms that should? I'm guessing the bailiff probably.
No, the bailiff is here always. We usually do prisoners, but a lot of times I'll do those on Tuesday. And when I'm getting to that, the judge would be here with them.
Okay, so possibly a max would be two armed.
And the only other reason you would have more down here is if just some came by to observe or if it was on a trial night, and it was their case that was up for trial, then you might have two or three officers here waiting their turn. But most of the time, you can only have one person.
And this, we plan for these to be purchased out of the special corrections fund. That is money collected on each ticket that can be used for the court system and jails. And there's certain things it can be used for, and we would propose that that.
Right, so it would.
We use that funding to pay for this.
And I forgot to mention that, I don't know that we use anything, since I did hear out of that fund, so it shouldn't affect even that fund very much. They're really successful company, like it says, $43 a car, which you get two ones, and one, and one gets you two ones. Also give you train, other than this.
I would propose we would purchase the one that has the two ones and the training.
Was that the island?
Councilman Cornelius makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Stewart seconds. Any discussion?
Let me mention one thing, by goodness.
Okay.
This won't be for approval tonight, but it's kind of conjunction of what he's saying. Let me ask Dwayne, is this door where it says exit, is that a deadbolt?
It's, it's a non-operable door.
Okay.
It's bolted, got it.
We've got a sign over there that says exit. We have a lot of, we have court in here. We also have a lot of public functions. What I'd ask the council to consider next time, and we'll get it on the agenda, is if we create a fire door back there behind that exit sign. Because right now, if we had a fire, or you were trying to escape from somebody that created a emergency situation, you would go through that door and you would be trapped out there. So really, that sign over there is to set it. And so what I'm going to ask Dwayne, somebody to do, is to look at what the cost is on creating a fire door there. In other words, the door that you can push, it'll set off an alarm. I know. I know from time to time, they use that to access the safe, but men certainly can be disabled during those times, but it would still be a door that you could go in and out of in the case of emergency. So that's just food to talk in conjunction with this safety measure.
Yeah, and recently, I've seen, I don't know if it's a seal person, some sort of security person, and the three things, somebody pulls out a gun, or run, hide, and then fight. So if you run that way, try to get out, you weren't wrong way, it's the same right now.
Are there any other questions or discussions? All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Judge.
Let me, let me mention one other thing, while I'm on that subject. Betty may remember when we saw this, but it was the last council, the council before that, showed a video of the council, maybe somebody brought a gun. And I wouldn't be, no one bad idea if you showed this council that video. It's very sobering. And you might even consider use of that detector on council meetings.
Yeah, and I actually think that's a school board meeting, man.
I wasn't.
No, it was council meeting.
Was it council meeting?
So it definitely would be hit.
As, as we all know, you know, their position, government campers can be quite charged, emotionally charged. But it may be something you want to consider today.
Excellent.
You gotta get where the why not use it.
Remarkable.
Yeah, it's, I've seen the video, and it is a very sobering video.
Something we could be dealing with after this purchase, for sure.
We also need the same thing for the doors downstairs in the bathrooms, and Jimmy's been looking at getting some of those same type doors.
Yeah, Betty and I've talked about this. One of the concerns is, again, abused to the building during public functions. As y'all know, there's access to the building at the downstairs, well, I know on the
Both sides.
Both sides, okay. Both sides have doors that go outside. There's, Betty and I've talked about, there'd be access, people go in there, open the doors, let people in, and maybe they shouldn't, they've got too many people up here. And I would strongly suggest we put fire doors on those as well, so that it's not something to be opened, and there's free access in and out of other quarters.
Here, I think it's what we're getting, Dwayne, Chief Bows, to look at those and see if we can come up with something. Next on the agenda is I would entertain a motion to consider a special event liquor license for Craw Babies LLC doing business as Craw Mama Seafood Steak and Catering for the Red Cross Touch and Red Event. This is on March first. There is a typo. It should be the first instead of the second, grade nine, two thousand thirteen, Town Hall located at three forty Blount Avenue.
So move.
Councilman Myers makes the, Councilman Mosley seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the law.
Councilman Stewart?
Yes.
Councilman Hillen?
Yes.
Councilman Carr?
Yes.
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Myers?
Yes.
Councilman Cuneus?
Yes.
Councilman Whitaker?
I'm staying.
Mayor Dollar?
Yes. Next on the agenda is I entertain a motion to set a public hearing to consider the restaurant liquor license for Jeremy South doing business as Casey's Coyote Cafe located at four ten Old Town Street. Councilman Whitaker makes a motion?
Second.
I'm not sure if you can. Councilman Myers seconds the motion. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the public hearing will be at the next council meeting. Next on the agenda is board appointments. And design board would be Susan Richter, and historic preservation committee would be Louis Lusk. And I ask for a motion to approve these two individuals.
Sure.
Councilman Cuneus makes the motion to approve. Councilman Mosley seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I'd like to call on Dwayne Elder to talk about the resolution regarding the parking on Worth Street.
At the last meeting, I talked to y'all about approving the re-warrant distribution, doing some repair work and reworking the railroad avenue road. And in doing this, all of their truck traffic will have to find a different route out of the harbor area. They're bound to use Worth Street. Worth Street's very narrow, and when cars park on both sides of the road, it's not a lot of room there even for two automobiles to pass each other. With all this extra truck traffic that will be coming up Worth Street, we felt like it would be better to have no parking on one side of that road. And so the north side of that road is the one that has the least amount of parking area, and would be the ideal one, because the trucks are gonna be coming up that side as they come out of the harbor. And so this is just a temporary for this time period. And that's the reason that we're looking at that. We're also gonna be looking at some traffic flow issues in the whole town, downtown area later, but for right now, the truck traffic coming out of Warren is what's causing this issue.
We're only talking about thirty days of Warren.
That's right.
Correct.
If, if their road project goes as fast as they think it's going to, if it looks like it's, you're gonna go beyond the thirty days, I'll come back to you.
Dwayne, question that I have. Of course, I realize that they're coming south on Warren to turn in, you know, they'll be on Warren turning in where I would be to there. But as far as if they're coming in from the north, will they be, if there's parking on both sides, will there be ample turning radius room? Because if not, they're gonna have to be in the right-hand lane of Gunner to make the turn, you know, across traffic to stay in one lane. I'm just trying to think ahead, if for thirty days, if we should prohibit it, we're parking on either side of that street.
And working with Warren Distribution, ninety-nine percent of their trucks come from the south, come from the Abbeville area. They say they very rarely have a truck that comes in from the River Bridge area.
They do make that turn now. I mean, I don't think it's their trucks, but I've been at the red light and they did turn.
Right.
So do you have that though?
Kendrick Morgan has trucks that make the turn, go in there too. They use both Taylor and Warren. It is tight right there, but with no parking there, it kind of gives you a little extra. Because the cars now, when they pull up to the red light, they will be closer to the curb than they will be if there's a car parked there, so.
Dwayne, there was some discussion on the red light situation. Is that a separate issue?
That's a separate issue. We're, we're having some issues with our new red lights and the cameras and the trip boxes, and, and we're gonna be working through those. Jim Peterson and I have been looking into that. There're gonna be some areas where we will have to make it a permanent no parking close to the intersections to keep cars from parking in the trip zones.
Dwayne, I know we discussed with your council about changing the parking on Taylor between a corner and Blount, blocking the parallel parts on the other side of Taylor. When y'all look at that, remember again about trucks that are traveling south on four thirty-one, turning left on the Taylor, because we have trucks making that turn now. If you've got those cars at Taylor sticking out, just remember what impact that may have.
Right. And that's one of the things we've, we've been looking at, because it is, makes it hard for trucks to turn in there. We feel like that this will actually get the cars, the parked cars farther away from the driving lanes, even doing this, and be what they are now. And if they can make the turn at the corner, they will actually miss the cars that'll be down past the entrance and the exit out of the warehouse parking lot.
Did y'all look at the stop bars? Excuse me, do you look at the stop bars there? What's the stop section from down there? Do you have an idea?
I, I.
I mean, if the traffic stops, you did the stop bar, that gives them turning.
Right. The new stop bars are a lot farther away from the red light than the old ones were, so it gives that truck a little more room to make that turn there on the, at the streets.
But also, speaking of Taylor, if you're going, if you're going east on Taylor to go to Blount, if you're, if you're gonna have to turn north, that's in one way on Blount, you have to get all the way up to where you can see that there's not a light there to be able to turn left, because I know when, even in a pickup, if you're turning in now the way the parking is, it can be difficult, and somebody's pulled all the way up, because they're trying to see traffic to make sure when they can pull out, so.
Right.
It is a difficult situation.
Now, all of these streets in downtown area, the side streets are very narrow, and it's very difficult for having parking and traffic, especially truck traffic.
We'll continue to look at those, and hopefully, we will have some recommendations at a work session that we can bring before the council to look at all the traffic flow.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Do we need to take Taylor Street out of there? Just say just for Worth Street?
It is Worth Street.
Councilman next. Whitaker makes a motion to approve the resolution regarding Worth Street for thirty days. Councilman Myers seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the resolution to change the workman's comp to the League Workers' Comp Group. We got two quotes, and this one's significantly less, so we would like to go back to the workman's comp lines.
I'm making a motion to go back to what was compensation agreement with the league.
Councilman Myers makes a motion to approve the resolution. Councilman Cuneus seconds the motion. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a couple of quick announcements. We would like to congratulate Val Jones and Cadley Jackson on the Best in Show at the State Superintendent Visual Arts exhibit. She is the first student at GHS to receive this honor, so we'd like to congratulate Cadley and then her teachers, Val Jones. Also, we would like to announce that today, about two o'clock, the governor released the A-Trip grants, and we were approved for the Highway seventy-nine A-Trip grant that we have planned for. So that's very exciting news for the city. Does anyone else have anything? Would anyone like to speak? Speed now. Speed now for Ever Hold Your Peace?
Or come back and do it later?
That's right. For tonight, speed now for Ever Hold Your Peace.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman Mosley makes a motion to adjourn. Councilman Gillen seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.